We're going to be moving on to public hearing and proposed water and wastewater rates. And presentation by Diana Langley, and I will say right up front, we will have three comments during the public part of it, or three cards have been turned in.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I provided a presentation at the budget workshop. I've taken that presentation, added a little bit of information based upon council input at that workshop, and so I have this presentation again tonight. So for a little bit of background, what's the purpose of rates? So the intent of rates is to ensure adequate revenues in the water and wastewater enterprise funds for operation and maintenance, debt service coverage, and capital projects. So debt service is past capital investments that have been financed over time versus capital investment, could be ongoing capital investments that are pay-as-you-go. So if council recalls, the previous water and wastewater rates were adopted in 2011. In early 2016, through a series of workshops, staff presented the fiscal outlook for both water and sewer recommended of a five-year plan for rate increases. So if you recall at that time, the rate increases were approved, and then we were, you know, progressing along, and if the drought had not occurred, we would have anticipated the rates to follow this blue line, the revenues. But you can see the impact of the drought on those revenues. For wastewater, the drought was not as pronounced because the wastewater rates for single-family homes are based upon a flat rate versus actual consumption. So we went through a Proposition 218 process last spring, and through that, the water rates that were approved are shown on the screen. And I want to point out the baseline allocation that was approved through the Proposition 218 process. If you recall, we received a lot of feedback from the customers requesting to keep the baseline allocation the same as it had been previously. So for example, for one-inch service, the baseline allocation was 15 HCF. So the Proposition 218 approved rates include the reduced baseline allocation, the rates that were adopted in 2016, '17 included the higher baseline allocation. So what is the difference between the Proposition 218 approved rates and the current rates? So as I noted, there's a higher baseline allocation, and then council actually set the water rates below the Proposition 218 rates. And the reason for that being that when the water rate model was being developed, it was based upon a 32% conservation rate. Over this last year, our conservation mandate was reduced to 15%, and so council felt comfortable actually setting the water rates at a level below the 218 amount with the understanding that consumption would increase. And then here are the Proposition 218 approved wastewater rates. So for fiscal year 2016, '17, we've actually continued to see a fairly high level of conservation.
Very high.
So for the months of July 2016 through April 2017, we've experienced 24.5% conservation, which is significant because the rates in 2016, '17 were set based upon an amount of 15% conservation. So how has that impacted our revenues? For water sales, for 2016, '17, we budgeted $11,944,200. What we're projected to receive is $11,109,000. So that continued conservation has impacted the revenues for the water fund. For wastewater, council adopted the 218 rates, and so the budgeted was $11,280,000, and were projected to come in at $11,452,400. So pretty much on track with what we expected through the rate model. So now moving on to the proposed rates. So staff is still proposing to maintain the higher baseline allocation than what was approved through the 218 process. And then for fiscal year '17, here are the proposed water rates. And you'll also notice that the flow rate per excess HCF is recommended to increase. So what does that mean? So for a one-inch service, if you use 15 HCF or less, you're going to pay the $32.58. If you go over the 15 HCF, you would then pay $1.67 for any HCF in excess of the 15. So here's a graph that shows the approved 218 rates versus what is recommended for fiscal year '17, '18, then also that volumetric flow rate. So through the 218 process for '17, '18, $1.70 was approved, and we're recommending $1.67. I think the thing that's also important to note on this graph, this 218 rate is based upon the 11 HCF. This proposed rate of $32.58 is based upon the 15 HCF. And so, you know, we're recommending to council, and council gave us this strong feedback last time, you know, if we can, to set the rates below the 218 level. So what's the difference for the proposed '17, '18 rates? So like I said, we're still continuing, we're recommending to keep the higher baseline HCF, and then set the '17, '18 rates below the 218 by these amounts here. So what does that mean as when we compare to other water agencies? So this is hard to, there's so many different agencies on here, but here's Yuba City's current rate, and this is based upon a one-inch water service with 20 HCF average usage. Here is Yuba City's proposed rate, and then you have Gridley, West Sacramento, Roseville, Calusa, Auburn, Oliver, Chico, Sacramento, Davis, Woodland, Orville. So you can see that our proposed rates are at the low end of the scale when compared on a regional basis to other agencies. So what does this mean in terms of funding allocation over time? That we will continue to see the rates increase through the current rate program that ends in fiscal year, ends in 2021, and then at that point in time, we would have to reevaluate. But with these funds, we would cover O&amp;M expenses, debt service, rate-funded capital expenses, and then reserve-funded capital expenses. And then last year, there was a lot of discussion related to the debt service coverage ratio. If you recall, our bond covenants require that we maintain a debt coverage ratio of 1.2. There was concern last year that we were going to drop below that 1.2 level. Fortunately, the increased rates were approved through the 218 process, the rates were brought into effect on August 1st, and so we were able to collect additional revenues. And so you can see that the debt coverage ratio was able to come back up above the 1.2 level, may stay above the 1.2 level. So with that, I'm going to move on to the proposed wastewater rates. Staff is recommending to continue with the Proposition 218 approved wastewater rates. There are tremendous number of capital projects that need to be funded, not only at the wastewater treatment plant, but if you recall, the rate program includes $1 million annually for the collection system. And so how do we compare to other agencies? Here is Yuba City's current for a single-family resident at 44.58, and Yuba City's proposed at 49.04. And so we're about in the middle of the other comparison agencies that I mentioned previously, with Calusa being at the high end and Chico being at the low end. So looking at the funding allocation over time, again, these rates would be used to cover the O&amp;M expenses, debt service, and capital costs. And then the debt service coverage ratio for wastewater is still maintaining well above the 1.2 level. So when you look at a bill comparison for a single-family dwelling with a one-inch service, the current total bill, and I'll just use an annual average of 20 HCF, would be $79.58. Under the proposed rates, the water bill would be $40.95, the sewer bill would be $49.04, for a total proposed bill of $89.99, which is below the amount authorized through the 218 process of $91.46. And again, I just want to stress that this water bill is based upon the higher allocation than what was approved through the 218 process. So I'm going to kind of change to a different subject for a minute. This is a recent, something recent that's come up through the state. So it's called the Affordable Drinking Water Low Income Rate Assistance Program. And Assembly Bill 401 directs the State Water Resources Control Board to prepare a plan that covers funding and implementation of a low-income water rate assistance program. The plan is due January 1, 2018, and a report is due to the legislature by February 1, 2018 regarding feasibility, financial stability, and desired structure of the program. So a public, the state is going to be holding a series of public meetings. The closest one will be July 10 in Sacramento, and it's later in the afternoon. When I was looking at a presentation that was prepared by UCLA, they noted that 81% of Yuba City water customers are below the 200% federal poverty line, which is $48,600 for a four-person household. So what does this mean? So they're evaluating four program scenario alternatives. Under Alternative 1, a household below the 200% of the federal poverty line would be enrolled in a statewide program offering a 20% discount on their water bill. Option 2, households below the 200% of the FPL and paying less than $100 on their monthly water bill would receive a 20% discount. Households paying $100 or more would receive a 35% discount. Option 3, households below 200% of the FPL who are not served by a public utility commission regulated water system with an existing low-income rate assistance program would be enrolled in a separate unified program offering a 20% discount. And option 4, households below 200% of the FPL who are served by a water system not currently offering a complaint low-income rate assistance program would be enrolled in a separate unified program offering a 20% discount. So how would they propose to pay for this? So different financing options that they will be discussing include a unit-based consumption surcharge on non-participating households' drinking water bills. So if 81% of Yuba City falls below that line, 19% of Yuba City would be contributing towards a fund to help pay for, not necessarily all of Yuba City, but be contributing likely towards a state fund to help pay for this rate assistance program. Another option may be the passage of a statewide tax or fee. Or a third option may be an annual state income tax rebate to eligible households financed by dedicated state fund. So as this program moves forward, it's important for people to keep track of these public meetings and participate because it's not, you know, this would be likely a state-run program, and so how it would be applied, who knows how it could be applied, but there will be a lot of discussions related to this. But it's a pretty aggressive timeline in terms of having to submit the plan in January and then report to the legislature in February. But it's something to keep track, and I just want to note, in that UCLA study, they specifically mentioned Yuba City as having 81% below that 200% of the FPL. So for tonight, council options are to do nothing, and the proposed, and the Proposition 218 approved rates will go into effect on July 1. Or council can adopt the recommended resolutions to set the water rates below the Proposition 218 approved level and the wastewater rates at the Proposition 218 approved level. So I want to note at the budget study session, council asked staff to hold a community workshop in June to provide our customers, our utility customers, with background information in terms of how were the rates developed, what do the rates pay for, the condition of the existing facilities. And so there will be a presentation on the 15th, more so as information to our customers just in terms of what's led to these rates. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any specific comments or questions from council members at this time? Seeing none, then I will open the public hearing, excuse me, and ask Mr. Dale McDowell to please go to the podium, and all you got to do is say your name.
Dale McDowell is my name, and Kelly started out the same way. This year, we're going on a publication as far as the prices on increases that has come along. It says, in the Appeal Democrat this week, it said 17%. That's 17% from last year to this year. That's correct. Then it says 49% for the amount at the end of five years. That's wrong. It's 97%. I don't know who figures the percentages, but that isn't correct. It's incorrect information you're feeding to the public, which I don't think is proper. Then another thing I want to bring up is that the five years prior to 2016, the rates went into effect on September 1. New rates. For last year, you moved it to August 1, which in my estimation probably brought you in an extra quarter of a million dollars. Now this year, you want to, instead of August, you want to go, you want to move it to July. So there's another bump at, I don't know, maybe $150,000, $200,000 there. It's additional information, money that you're costing the public that you're not telling them about. And I don't, I don't think that that's, I don't think that's right.
I think I can respond to this. I think I can respond accurately to this. It's typically we do the adjustments to any of our rates at budget time, when the budget turnover is, and that is July 1. And so that's why last year's rates were, went into place late for the budget, and so we only have nine, 10, 10, 11 months to base, you know, of data, accurate data to go by. So this would be the, what we're doing now, is the normal time when all the adjustments would be made to any rates.
Yeah, I just.
So it's always July 1.
But the previous, the previous five years was on September 1. So that's.
Clarification on that?
Pardon me?
I'm asking for her to clarify.
Yeah.
So he's correct. So under the previous rate program, they went into effect September 1. I will say, last year, when we were doing the ordinances and presenting the rates to council, we said that these rate increases would go into effect July 1.
Right.
For future fiscal years, so '17, '18 through the end of the program. And to respond to the 49% increase, that information did not come from city staff. So we provided the rate table to the Appeal Democrat, but we did not calculate the percentages, so that came from the Appeal Democrat, so.
Well, if you give them the information, then you should.
I gave them the actual rate table so that they could see the actual numbers.
Okay.
That was the other thing, I was going to say, that was the Appeal Democrats' decision on what to publish, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Moving on to John Whitman.
I'm here with a cautionary tale. Diana Langley has done a very thorough job in the staff report, and of course, going back to the past and Proposition 218, we really, here we are. And, but, I wanted to share my personal and professional experience with you as a council as a foundation to my thoughts. I was a business owner. I was in the real estate brokerage and business in Southern California as well as Northern California. I served on a planning commission in a growing community in Southern California. I was an economic development professional, working with businesses, small and large, in every sector, to assist businesses to stay in business, expand their business, and to launch new operations. I served as a liaison between business and public agencies, local, state, and federal. So I have some understanding of the processes relative to business. That experience included across the state and here in Yuba City for a number of years. But I'm principally here as a local taxpayer and rate payer. My concern is for the disconnect between public agencies, managers, and the decision-makers, policymakers such as yourself. Up until late 1970s, public agencies relied heavily on property taxes. And because values generally trended up, tax rates were the focus of budget talk. We kept the rate stable. Nobody talked about total revenue. They just talked about the rate. Then property values, particularly in Southern California and the Bay Area, began to rapidly increase, but tax rates were championed as being stable. But the result was government revenue and budgets increased rapidly until there was the Proposition 13 earthquake. Most of you here maybe don't remember that. I surely do. I was in the business, I was involved in the community, and I saw that. Personally, I was opposed to Prop 13 because I was concerned about the impacts, and those were borne out. But after Proposition 13, local government revenues declined briefly, briefly, but soon recovered their upward climb. I would just ask you to remember, total tax and fee burden, not rate. Here, we've talked a lot about rate, but it's really the total tax burden. And Diane was talking about the state program and incomes. We are not a wealthy community by any stretch of the imagination, and these kind of things are regressive. And the last thing I'll say before I step away.
I would give you a little bit more time if you kind of cut down the history and get.
Okay. I'm just going to tell the story once. When I was in economic development, I worked with large and small businesses. I was working on a large project in a rural community in the Central Valley of California. And as I stated at a meeting with local officials, money always seeks comfort and security. And money also has wheels. It moves where it's secure and where measures the risk is being low. California and Yuba City has a challenge, and that is increasing security and removing risk for money because it will move. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Phil Traynor.
I read about this in the paper this morning. Other than that, I wouldn't have known anything about it. Consequently, you wouldn't have seen me here. I think that before you go any further, if you're going to do anything on this, the public should be aware of it. I think that under Prop 218, you shouldn't put a, shouldn't run an ad or an article in the appeal. You should probably put some information in with the billing and let the public know what's happening on the rates. That way, if we did have a meeting, everybody could show up that felt they had an interest in what was happening. I went back over our bill at home for the last six months. All these numbers you saw up here are all a bunch of poppycock. It's what you have to pay is what the numbers are. At our house, I paid $6. In December, I paid $6.96 a unit for water. January, I paid $6.70 a unit, $8.75 a unit, $9.80 a unit. This dollar 18 and a dollar 80 doesn't mean anything. What size of a check do you have to write, correct? Bringing it out to what people understand in this area, that comes up to around a low of $2.2, $2,200 an acre foot to a high of $3,800 an acre foot is what I paid. So if the public are aware of what's happening, I don't, you know, I don't, I'm not saying you don't mind paying the bill, but if I have to pay the bill, I'll pay it. But the thing is that we all adjusted to what we had to do in the area. Our lawns took a beating. Can I have a little more time?
Keep going.
Okay. Our front lawn and our back lawn have gone to hell. They tell me now I can put in new lawns, it'd be around $8,000 bucks. But why would I put them in if we're not going to have water again? So what I would ask the council to do is to, if you are going to push this through, go in under 218, let the public know so we can have a public meeting and decide on this. I would ask that at that time, you present us with a, some kind of a spreadsheet showing us what the income and expenses were on the water for the last five years. I can't address the wastewater because we're not on a wastewater system. But if we did come around, I'd like to see what the numbers are because the public, after all, we're paying the bill. We put you in office. Look after us, we look after you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. I do need to make mention to you that the 218 was a five-year decision. So if we do not do this reduced rate amount, it goes to the maximum 218. So decision's already been made. We have, normally, it would just be, we wouldn't have any comments, nothing. It would just go on through without any, without us making any decisions, bringing anything to the public. It would be an automatic trigger. We made it to where public, last time, we had many meetings. I attended many home meetings and discussions on making sure it didn't go down to 11. What you're saying on the per-unit is true. I only did, used two units per month and for, for months and at my place. So I probably paid more than you did per unit than that. I was probably up around $12, $13 per unit. So I understand what you're saying, but the real thing is, is the citizens wanted it at 15. We did it 15.
Well, let me go back and say to you that.
218 is done. There is no more public making a decision.
That is not what you wrote up in the paper.
That is not, that's the paper's decision.
Well, that's the only thing that I went on.
You talk to the paper, you talk to the paper and tell them that they're wrong. We do our best to have them be accurate. If they decide to be inaccurate and somewhat misleading, that's their choice, and it sells papers.
It would appear to me that if you went on the 218, it would be beneficial for the city rather than going what you're looking at here.
Well, it's higher.
No, it isn't really.
Yes, it is higher.
It really isn't.
Yes, it is.
Right on. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, no more comments. Close the public portion of this item and bring it to the council. It looks like a comment from Mr. Buckland would be in order.
A year ago, we had countless discussions over what the rates, rate studies, input from the public. Everything that I have heard tonight, there's some new, Mr. Whitman, thank you, because some of the historical things, and certainly when you put into prospective rates and what the overall cost to a citizen is, to be able to live in the community is certainly an important factor. But in addition to that, we have to have viable delivery systems or systems in which to get rid of non-wanted materials from our residents, and that's through our sewer Systems, you know, I'm not going to get into what the costs are and what an acre foot of water costs. Delivery systems have to be maintained.
Delivery systems have to be maintained. We would be negligent as a city not to keep our systems in a viable delivery condition in which they're not leaking, undermining. If you look at the current infrastructure in the state of California, and every time you see an incident occur with a sinkhole, the majority of those are being caused by leak erosion under roadways, and cars fall into them. Individuals are threatened by that. But we see those, you're seeing them probably every two weeks right now, a lot in California. Some of that's just from, from lack of maintenance, not having the focus and foresight to make sure that the delivery systems are working. And Yuba City has been blessed with a very good and viable system, but yet it needs maintenance. Water costs money. It's, it's just a fact of life. Nobody, Mr. Traynor, when, when you say that you live here and, and you pay your bills and pay taxes, we're elected members that are, this is, this is our community too. We do the very same thing. We don't get a break on our water bill for, for setting the rates higher. I just saw some disturbing information that the state wants me to maybe kick in to pay for lower-income people. We keep our rates fairly low here. You saw the chart up here tonight.
Bottom.
We're towards the bottom. And it's, again, it's, it's a good delivery system. It's a system that's been well-maintained. They're out flushing, was it 3,000 hydrants because we couldn't do it while the, while the drought was in effect. We couldn't do that, but, but there's always a focus on making sure that, that we have the very best of, of water supply. We'll continue to do that. And does it take money? That's the unfortunate part. There are costs associated with this. We've had the hearings. We did them last year. The rates were set for five years. I was one of those advocates that said, if we can't come in under the 218 limit, vote me out of office. I said it from that seat right there last year. If, if we can't, then we're not doing our job. But the, the residents chose what that number would be, what the, what the rate would be for five years, and we're coming in under those rates. We, as a council, fought for the unit allocation to go from 11 to 15. We had long discussions on that. We met and met and met with the public. There will be another hearing coming up to help inform the public, and that date's right up there. So to say that we are doing things in the blind of the public, that's not true. We supply information, or the information, I'm certainly that the Appeal Democrat got was knowing what was on the agenda and asking staff for input. They were provided the information. They wrote an article. We, we as government do not control what the media puts out. That would be a violation of the First Amendment, and we're not going to do that. The paper is free to write what they want to write. That's all the comments I have.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Seeing none, I am looking for an action.
I'd move to approve the, or adopt a resolution setting the water rates at less than the Proposition 218 approved rates effective July 1st, 2017, and adopt a resolution confirming the wastewater rates at the Proposition 218 approved rates effective July 1st, 2017.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Unanimous vote. And we're looking at next year actually having it even better than this, we're hoping. Go ahead and water your lawns. Water your lawns. I know I am in my trees and gardens, so I'm very happy with it.